We're talking to Dr. Risher. We're going to kind of put it on hold until we can get some information. And if you guys have any information or any questions for me. But just to please consider that. And there are people here that came tonight just for that because I thought we were going to talk about it. So do you guys want to stand up if you were just kind of interested? And some of you, I don't know. I did kind of a presentation last at the end of the year that kind of showed that.
Sure.
So that was just kind of all I just wanted to touch base. Thank you.
Thank you.
So what do we need a certified?
You just need to just, just say yes, approve. Thank you. I was looking for the wording. So you just need to approve it. If the money comes out of adult ed. And it was something that Mr. Ketchum kind of started cleaning it out of that. And it's just. We've just got someone who will be one of them. So it's just kind of get them in our school. Get let them see what's going on. The teachers and the community gets sort of kind of mingle and visit. And it's just kind of one. And we get to work out. Thank you. Now we need things like. Work.
We can do what we can and change America into the Republic of which is saying. Under God, in the middle of the world. Correct.
If we have to, we'll have to be able to. Yes. And then maybe just a little tiny bit of information. Over the last year and. More than just. But after you see what you're teaching out. Like how much?
Yeah, well, I, I have a solid eight that come all the time. And then I have about three or four that are online. That was in, I'm familiar with one of them. And then. Like I said, up to 25. So it depends like from right now until spring break. It's pretty solid once you guys say. You know, I'm just teaching many fitness classes throughout Caliselle in different places. Eight is really nice. Eight to 12 is pretty solid and you're going to get that anywhere you go. But when we started getting 20, I was like, wow. And it's just about, it's just when people get busy and have stuff going on. So the very beginning is kind of, kind of iffy. But then I had people ask me, they wanted to start it.
Okay, we need to get approval of this. Okay, approval of the agenda. And I understand that we can prove all these at once. You don't have to go down individually. Right? Okay. So. And say the motion for the approval of the agenda. And the approval of minutes. I need. Move all together about. Oh, yes. We can prove that. Along with the district. That's the two best we can have.
I'll make motions to approve the second agenda.
Second. Any comments? All through, all in favor. I oppose. All right. The approval of the bill will be next. We have to give the minutes. I think it is something that's. Okay.
I say consent. If you have a question.
Okay. Perfect.
It's recording. Okay, yeah. I think we've already approved it. All right. And the next thing is the approval of bills, which we have. I guess that question, Mr. Best, for $2,000 for his site program. What is that? That is equipment consumable for the science class. Yeah. And then the concrete ground, playground.
Yes, that was the building, the new building in the back. Did not have the frost protection that the code department wanted. So the concrete had to be demolished. The frost barrier put in and then the concrete re-poured. Otherwise, we were not going to be allowed to have children in that building. By the code office.
And the rental on playground, what is the rental on playground?
Oh, that.
Dump trailers to haul.
Dump trailer.
Yeah.
They had to bring in, there's so many inches of woodchips that have to be under the play structure. And they rented a dump trailer to pick up the woodchips and.
So that's on top of the woodchip. It's another.
The woodchips are on there separately.
$1,400 and get them here costing us $400.
Yes.
How long do they last?
Woodchips? I have no idea.
Yes. We'd be looking at the place and then like next fall.
Yeah, they put in.
They get freshened up.
Yeah.
It's probably need to get something with a hornet's nest anyway. They are providing that woodchip. Probably next year we'll be looking at this other.
The, the woodchips that are, that were under the existing play structure were not replaced. So I don't think it's an annual. And even then, it wouldn't be the same quantity. So because that's a new playground, it had to be to a 12 inch depth. Whereas a freshening up might would just be an inch or two spread out over the entire area. So it wouldn't be as much of an expense.
This was.
Right, which required a lot more volume wise than an established playground will. Oh, and to clarify, so the concrete for the playground, because there's another concrete expense one here. The concrete playground is all of the, the poles that go into the ground are anchored with concrete. So they had to buy the concrete. They mixed it out there and put it in so that it's, it's safe and it's anchored. Further down, you'll see where it says removal and replace concrete for that amount. That is the concrete around the music and STEM classrooms that had to be replaced.
So the disposal, so which is in first of September. Are they recurring STEM or is that, is that the disposal?
That's evergreen disposal, so they come monthly.
So we get it back, we pay a thousand dollars.
Yeah. We didn't in the summer, I think after a certain time in June, they waited till September. So we didn't pay it those two months. But yes, it's around a thousand a month.
So, yeah. What's the CSPD presentation virtual?
So we're the fiscal host for the CSPD in our region. So we, they send us the bills, we pay it, but it's, it's just run through us. We don't, we don't actually pay it.
Part of our general fund.
No.
So we can write a check and get you a first story.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's part of the E grant. So once they send me the bill, say $500, then I put in the request from the state for it back. So it's a wash in the end.
I'll be sharp.
That's coffee.
The turn down here for lodging for the secret. Is that just that full lodging or is that the travel as well?
That was the lodging. Yeah. 10. And that was, I saved that aside because it was approved last year to, for them to go. So that was the remaining of the estimate for that, that will cover that, the lodging portion. There's a few meals you'll see in there as well, that we reimburse the staff for meals.
Yeah, this is just for the rooms though?
Uh, it was a week long, I believe. Um, was it a week? Okay. Yeah. Just on vacation.
I'm. One second.
Can you take the bill for others? All those, I would say the end of session. They all look in favor. All those folks.
Marilyn might bring up the guilt charge.
I would say enough, no.
One house.
Whoa. You know the trouble, we can't provide those times you stay out. I, I little, I'm a machine. Probably don't have $300. Anyway. Okay. We've already had. I've placed one. Right, that we're selling chance. Anything? We have a question here. The next meeting is September 19th. We're so. Um, we just wanted, I'm here, Mary Kay Dover, and I so President of Body, Big Battle. And Sarah is here, and so is Molly. This one, how you know, our first meeting is in October. And we have new members coming in and we will do a presentation to you, you know, at the next school board meeting after our first meeting could be a new member. Um, we did have a question. Those of you that were here last year, teachers presented in their, in their groups, like sixth grade, science team, fourth grade, second grade during this time. And we had a sign up sheet for teachers to sign up and present the highlights of their curriculum, their year. And we just wondered if you'd like to do that during your time.
I would, I would.
I liked it. Okay. Great, so we'll start a sign up sheet and, you know, it's only been a couple of weeks. So probably don't have a whole lot yet, although I could show you some Marshall towers that are pretty cool. So we are having, you know, the teachers are, all the teachers from my observation are so excited about the year. Starting off on positive note to be there for themselves or others in their schools. So that's our friend scene. So there you go. A little school. I don't know what else. We're there. We're there. All right, principal support.
Yeah, so just a quick enrollment update again. We are now at 429 gifts in regards to sports, which is right where we were last year. So we ended the year at 430 kids. And we have, you know, a situation over the summer where we lost a lot of kids. But we've gained them back in. Troy, I'm not sure you probably heard that we have to take out one of our sections of sixth or second grade and put them in kindergarten. So we're at five sections of kindergarten, four sections of first, five of second grade, five of third, and four of fourth. Right now, our average class size is 18, 19, 20, which is where we like to keep it. It's where we have to keep it, kindergarten, first and second grade. And then third grade bumps up to either 26, fourth grade's 28, and then fifth grade is 30. Try to keep it as low as possible. Our focus in the elementary for the year is on adults this year. Last year, our focus was on kids and greeting kids every day and doing meeting, that type of thing. And this year, we're going to focus on positive community with each other. And then a common teacher efficacy, which is essentially teachers working together in teams. And PLCs are a big part of that. Team meetings are a big part of that. So we have a schedule set up, like Tanya is going to visit grade level teams. I'm going to visit grade level teams as much as I can so we can take advantage of our common preps that we work so hard to keep in our schedule. Just a quick note on that. There's a Hattie rating in education that looks at the effectiveness of certain practices. And he looked at about 250 different practices. And homework as an example is about a zero, there's like point two effect on educate on the outcome of student development improvement. Common teacher efficacy was, or I should tell you the scale is, the max is like two. And the low, the low end is point five, negative point five, excuse me. The Hattie rating for common teacher efficacy was 1.57, which is almost as high as you can go on the scale. There's very few that are above that. So it's extremely important to us. And we're going to do a purposeful meaningful PLC model with that this year. An example of what's not effective is moving school, which is a negative point four Hattie rating. And I mentioned that because of all of our new kids that, that are here at the school. And we got maybe 60 new kids in the elementary, I've been right in there. So we've got a challenging beginning of the year ahead of us. We've got to teach our, you know, culture to new students, new staff. We've got to teach how we do things at West Valley School. And that's pretty difficult when you're already starting out, you know, behind the curve. So the elementary school will be working this year with the leadership team to take another look at the shared beliefs that we have. To make those more meaningful. Those are a part of our governing documents that we have, that we created over the years. Our compact for excellence, we're going to go in, dive into that as well. Edit what we might need to leave in or take out. So essentially, we, we are trying to do Ignite Nation without Ignite Nation. If you're unfamiliar with that, it was a company that we brought in five years ago to help us with some culture pieces. And through, you know, events with outside of our control, you know, COVID being one of them. The leader of the company passed away. So it was kind of lost in translation there a little bit. It's our, it's our goal to bring that back to, to our culture. Because it was, I think anyway, it was almost the embedded phase. We had definitely implemented it. And now it's time for us to redo all of that. But we've got a good skeleton with, with the start because we kind of know a little bit more than we did going into it the first time where we did nothing. Now we've got a good starting. So it's going to be a pretty, pretty hard job for the leadership team to do. But our staff meeting is going to focus on, on the back. We'll move forward. We will not get it done in a year, that's for sure. Yeah, it's the year of change. You're going to hear that a lot. That's a new staff, just in, in general. About five new staff members in the elementary. We had 11 people move rooms over the summer. So it's, yeah, quite a, quite a new journey out there in the elementary school.
So homework doesn't help, huh?
No. No, much to my dismay.
So you're saying no more homework?
I wish about 20 years ago. That way.
Thank you.
I'm Tina Blair, middle school principal. So we've been scheduling our drills for this half of the year and completed the second fighter drill today, the whole school did. We first did it with just a, a walkout with no bells. And then today we did it with all the bells on and I think that went pretty well. Expected that was great to move this many kids. We really tried to get them all out of here within two minutes. And, and it was really organized. We do it without running. These kids really take it seriously. They did a good job. That's great. And the STAR testing or benchmark testing, the window begins this week. So we're required to do benchmark testing three times a year. It begins for the whole school and over the next week and into, well, towards the beginning of October. So we test these kids. And we're looking at that data to see at this point where kids are at to measure later in the year. But also we reference back to it to see if some students are having learning loss over the summer. So sometimes you're in a meeting and they'll ask if they require summertime education for year round services. And we can look at that and also get shorter breaks by monitoring before a break or after and seeing where kids are at. So, and also that science course today, the state science course were released today. So we had a peek of those at fifth and having trouble downloading eighth unless someone else forgot to them. But we'll be taking all that data combined and take that information into our PLCs, going to those groups that Richard's referring to. So the teachers will be able to look at that data and find areas of strengths and weaknesses and compare that against our program. Because we often talk about what we teach, but we really need to be talking about what they learn. So there's a paradigm shift in that field tomorrow. And more fun, I guess, for kids is that football jamboree at Legends tomorrow night is, begins at 7:00 PM for any interested in football. The next volleyball game that ladies play here tonight, but they play again on Thursday, the 15th against KMS at 4:00, 4:35. And we have our open house. You're all invited to open house is this Thursday night from 5:30 to 7:00. We're doing an all district open house. And that's all that I have. If the board members are interested at all, you would like to get a picture of the board members together, just one quick snap. Because around the corner, you can take a peek. We have a picture of staff for middle school. And we're trying to piece that together before the open house. And we have all the way up to Dr. Risher, but we, we don't have our board. So if anyone's interested, we can get a snap of you. That would be great. Thank you.
Have you seen, like material, like with the testing? Star bench, like it's seeming to be like decline through COVID. There notable decline in like testing scores?
In certain areas. So it tends to match what, I'm interested on the aspect, it tends to match, it should be quote. And I felt like that the math was the hardest hit and some areas of competition. And then watching that grow over last year. And, but there were areas we could see that, yes, the kids generally could be about six months behind, depending on their attitude and what happened with them at home. There were kids that made gains, great gains, kids that held it. But we tend, tended to see them catching up over the last year. So, and I'm hoping that, I think it would take those kids, some of them two to three years for that lag to make it. But we are seeing, almost as if you were seeing an acceleration. If that makes sense.
We had a lot of kids coming to us too that had not been to school for a long time, especially in the elementary. So we would hear that their parents said that second grade was their first time like in school last year, you know, so.
And they don't have to be enrolled or declared, enrolled at public school or at homeschool until age, until age eight. So, so they could have been at home with their parents, school in any format without formally registering, you know, on required. And so they can do at the age and we put them in second grade, even though technically they haven't really had, they don't really have to have at any school.
That's a rare exception.
For the most part, you try age appropriate or testing, look, we have, you guys could talk, the coaches could talk to us too. Because they can do placement tests and things and see what's best. Sometimes students are in a hybrid. They might be in one grade level part of the day and they might go visit someone else for reading or math. It depends on the student.
And they work at their academic level too, you know, if they're in special classes. Get what things there, they're.
Yeah.
They get what they need there, so.
They can be age corrected at some point if they need to, if they caught up and they got it. And it's better to have them with their peer group with agreement with their parents. They could be corrected and placed in a different grade level if appropriate at that time. So it's probably more, it's more fluid than we would.
Yes. So you have the items listed in your packet. The first is the incident report form. This is in response to the newly adopted board policy on restraint and seclusion. So this would be the document that we would use in those instances where if a student had to be restrained or secluded. So what this gives us is a description of the student, the event, the antecedent, which is what happened before whatever the event is. The description of the situation and the type of restraint that was used or possible seclusion. De-escalation or alternatives that were attempted prior to the student becoming escalated. Documentation if there were any kind of injuries. Documentation of all of the notifications, so how the administration was notified, how the district was notified. And the referral being formally documented in infinite campus, how, and also how the parents were notified. So there's two types of parent notification. Parents are expected to be notified verbally and also in writing so that we're assured that parents have noticed that the incident occurred. So this is a document that I co-created and coming from two states with lots of restraint laws. So this, this should cover us in pretty much any incident as far as restraint and seclusion goes. The next document you have is the request to distance medication, another policy that was updated. And this is a very. This is a very, it's a form that we already had. But this language has been modified to match what policy says. The previous form said, request to dispense prescription medication. If you read board policy, board policy makes no distinction between prescription and over the counter. So technically, a student who comes in and maybe they've just gotten braces and they need some Tylenol in the office to help with the braces. They would have to have this form filled out by their orthodontist to allow us to dispense even Tylenol. So this is just, it's another assurance and protection for the district when it comes to dispensing medication. And that's the only real change to this form is just aligning the language. The next document you have is the hiring procedures. And some of this, as we go through the hiring process, we may have to make some updates just as we see how things play out in practice. But. You can read through this, we will be developing and building on our forms and documents. Developing a bank of interview questions so that every time we interview for an elementary teacher, we use the same interview questions. Every time we interview for a para, we're using the same para questions. I've also added. It rolled over to the second page, policy references. So that you or anyone else, if you have questions as far as where I've developed these guidelines from, it's from these. Specific board policies. And we have three hires on the agenda today and I have their documents that I will pass around and you guys can look at. There was some concern over the transferring of their personal information, so anytime we have a hiring. I will bring in those, those documents that we have for you guys to look at. And. But this is, it's a process that we're definitely cleaning up and getting more consistent as far as hiring goes. Then we have purchasing procedures. We've discussed this briefly in previous meetings that purchasing procedures needed to be cleaned up a little bit. And that is something that we, Cecilia and I are working on doing. Just in that. Procedures that were in place have kind of gotten away from. And again, with pretty much any procedures, if there's policy to reference, I will always reference. The policy with the procedure so that if anyone has questions about where I'm getting the information from. And then I will also bring to each meeting. An enrollment report, I'm going to work on developing a spreadsheet that shows historical enrollment trends. So go back several years and build a spreadsheet that shows kind of. Month to month, year to year, how enrollment kind of ebbs and flows. So if you look at the top where it says funding report. Underneath, there's a date range, so there's one report that is for September eighth, twenty twenty-one. And then there's another report that is September seventh, twenty twenty-two. So the total student count this time last year was seven sixty-three. The total student count for this year is seven seventy-one. So we are, we're up a little bit. But I'll bring, as I said, I'll bring in something in the future that will be. A little bit more visually friendly. Also, you have a flyer for the Boardmanship Academy that is being offered through the community college. If that is something that you are interested in participating with. It went out in an email, but printed it out as well just so that you have that. Stephanie, you got a lot of copies of that. They're all the same.
Oh.
Oh, see, I made six copies and then I gave them to Cecilia and then she made six copies of six copies. Right. I thought I was making the copy, she thought she was making the copy, so we got plenty of copies. Yes. So that.
You really want us to do.
It's been mentioned as well, we are having the open house later this week. Another thing of note coming up is the SEC security audit, that is on September twenty-sixth. They will be here to review our safety procedures. Also. I, with the principles, we will be working on a parent survey that we want to have available. For parents to take either at the open house or we'll put it online. So for the survey. We want to get feedback, you know, general feedback, you know, how. How do parents feel about the quality of education their children are receiving at West Valley? How do they feel about their children's overall safety, their overall well-being? Also want to get feedback as far as what they think we could do better, what they think we're already doing a great job of. I also want to get interest in. Things that maybe parents committees that parents might would want to participate on. And then also, as Tara has talked about her. Community physical education, we have some other staff members who have some ideas for adult ed. And that's why we're kind of slowing down on that, is I want to put out that survey and see what. Families and or adults, parents and community members are interested in. So that we can budget the teacher's time and that funding appropriately to match what the community is interested in. Some other topics that I've heard back on is like an adult art. Class. There are some different parenting classes that one of our staff members does. So we want to make sure that we're, we're putting out a variety of things and that. People have an opportunity to participate in things that they're interested in. And. Looking forward, so we've discussed previously too, the roundup for safety grant through the Electric Co-op. I will be writing a grant for one thing or another, depending on how the SEC audit goes. Hopefully they're like, yeah, you're great and we don't need a whole lot. Something that I want to look at. If they don't have any significant recommendations is the traffic pattern with the parent drop off and pickup. I see this as a community safety issue with the way the traffic is flowing, but also. When you're in the parking lot, kids are being let off everywhere. There are kids who come through, you know, parents who drive through the parking lot. We have parents who are parking and they're walking their children to the building. We have some parents who are just opening the door and they're sending them out and there's kids walking through the parking lot. We have kids who are getting out on the road up here and. As the days get shorter and the mornings get darker, I have concerns about visibility and. Just the safety of our kids as they're being let out, so I do think. That there has to be a better way to do drop off and pick up with parents. So that will be something that I will look at. What is, what would be a possible solution and apply for a grant through the, the Electric Co-op to try to improve that. Another thing also with the, the electric company is a call today, Marilyn found the phone number for me and left a message. For the individual who does energy audits. One of the things that you. Will notice on our expenditure is our light bill is pretty hefty. And any way that we can save money, I definitely want to pursue. So bringing someone in to do that energy audit and make some recommendations on how we can be more energy efficient. Is something that I'd like to get set up here in the near future. And. This wasn't on my list until Richard mentioned it and I just wanted to elaborate on John Hattie. His research is called visible learning and his research is a meta-analysis of other research. So what his organization has done is they've taken as many projects as they can find on the impact of homework. And that's where they've come up with their, their rating scale. So it's not just they researched homework, they researched all of the research on homework. And they developed a rating scale. Based on how all of these different components impact student learning. Something with an effect size of point four or greater, point four grows a student a year. So anything you're looking for effect sizes that are greater than point four, those are all going to have the greatest impact on student achievement. Whereas of course, anything in the negative is actually going to be detrimental to student achievement. So anything. Three point, or point three nine to zero is, it's not hurting us, but it's not helping us as much as it could. There are some really good little graphics out and about. So on my Friday update, I'll include one of those just so that you can kind of see all of the. Effect areas that John Hattie has looked at. And the preliminary research from his organization on learning loss due to COVID was that the learning loss was. In general, not as significant as what people expected it to be, so his, that was preliminary last year. Was that the, the effects were not as, as bad as what we expected. But that's also a generalization, some populations were impacted greater than others. And.
Is that a national review that he's doing?
So he's actually out of Australia and I think he works at things globally. And there's, he has several books, his. The big go-to book on visible learning is very jargony. And he's written some others that are a little bit more. User-friendly, but the chart that I'm going to send you is color-coded, it's really nice, it tells you on a snapshot. On a two-page infographic, how. Different factors impact student achievement, everything from graphic organizers to whether a kid had breakfast in the morning. And it's. It's just, it's really interesting and whenever you're thinking from how those things impact students instructionally and you're trying to make decisions. You know, what's more important, working in my PLC or developing this homework assignment? Your PLC work is going to have a greater impact than your homework assignment is. So when you're prioritizing, even at the classroom level, your goals and objectives all the way to the school level. Being able to look at that research to make those types of priorities. Is, is helpful and helps us be more efficient in the decisions that we're making. Any other questions?
I see some politicians run with statements along the lines of if you're requiring people to do homework, you need to reevaluate your commitment. Caught on this, right?
Well.
And the evidence says.
Well, but here's, here's the thing, and I could climb up on a nice soapbox whenever it comes to homework. Kids go to school for what, seven hours a day? And then we're going to send them home to do three hours, two, three hours more of homework. We should be able to do our jobs in those seven hours. And then kids go home and get to be kids and get to do extra things. And homework should be practice, not learning new skills. Because if you send a student home with fifty math problems and they do those fifty math problems incorrectly. All that's happened is you reinforced the wrong way to do the math problem. So if your goal is to check for understanding or provide a little bit of extra practice. Homework shouldn't last longer than maybe ten minutes, fifteen minutes per subject area. I mean. But, and that's the impact that it has. It's, and it also helps parents kind of see what's going on in the classroom. As a parent, that's what I've used homework for, is to know what's going on at school. But as far as how. How we're expecting our students to spend their time and the impact that it has on their overall achievement. Homework in many cases can be very detrimental. Because I, I believe that kids should get to go home and spend time with their families and not do two to three hours more school.
The incident report thing.
Yes.
I really liked the part about efforts made and alternatives. Kind of that, that's the de-escalation stuff, is there any training that our teachers get on de-escalation?
So our special education teachers, some of our paras, the adopted. Restraint program here is CPI, I can't remember what CPI stands for. The majority of this type of training, whether it's CPI, other districts use right response. Most of the training actually focuses on identifying triggers. And preventing the situation from happening and de-escalating the child without having to use any type of restraint. Restraint and seclusion should always be a last ditch. Effort. It is. Those situations should only be used if someone's going to get hurt. But most of those trainings. They really do focus on de-escalation more than they do the restraint process.
Sounds like. You'd like to get a lot of training and then others that would benefit from that maybe teaching.
We could, and I think. Thinking about having teachers come in and present, maybe some of our teachers who have had CPI training. If they could come in and do like an elevator speech on, you know, do a five-minute summary of what that training looks like for you so that you have a better idea of it. One of the things that I like about CPI versus right response is it focuses on a team approach to de-escalation. Whereas, so whenever a student is having a moment. You have at least two staff members who are working with the student, which is supportive for both the student and for the staff member. Because. I've been the staff member and it wears you down quickly when you're the only one. And it becomes very draining for the adult, so.
And accountability too.
And the accountability. I feel like CPI is a better program. Haven't been trained in both. But that is something that we can look at, the thing that we want to be careful about is it is a certification process. So we only want people when possible who are certified. Responding with restraint because they have actually had all of the proper training. Ultimately, if we had a situation where a student were not safe. Any type of response to keep the student safe is what we're going to do because that is our ultimate obligation is to keep kids safe. And we have policy and there are laws that would protect individuals. In those instances, regardless of whether they were trained or not.
I think that's the training that the certified CPI people can probably do, but other, other teachers too, it's just like say this is what will happen and we don't have anybody around that certified. This is what you should do if somebody hears and how to, how to reach those that aren't.
Right. And that's, that's something we can check further into.
We took a large group in the spring from elementary. We took a large group from middle school and within is more going today and if we can do that and get them in the training. Going to do that. It ranges from administrators, paras, front office, some teachers, coaches. Spread around, so it started where we were most likely to get called to that and then it's going to spread over time. That's for sure, thank you. She, um, the idea of having that Friday update.
Yeah, I like that.
And that would go out on everybody's website, so it's pretty quick to kind of give enough.
Well, that will go to you guys, just to the board members. It's nothing that is, that would need to be public, but just to let you know that we've had a problem with yellow jackets. If you haven't heard. Right, which I heard there was up to a hundred. Because by the time kids get out and they talk to each other, everyone was stung at school on the first day. So, so yes, on Fridays, things, things that aren't. You know, things that would need to be on a board agenda, but just some general information, here's what's going on at school. Just so that you know, if there's something that I think, you know, someone in the public may ask you about, like the yellow jackets. You've got a little bit of information so that. You're not taken off guard. And then, you know, other fun educational things like John Hattie's visible learning chart. Well, it's there, the information.
I did attend that. And it's worthwhile, it would be a best spot, five or six meetings in the evening. And they bring in a lot of speakers that have a lot of experience, go through different scenarios, role-playing. So I think it costs about a hundred dollars, but it's worth, it's worth that, that's for sure.
I don't know if you guys touched on that, I think it's BA, there was one for nine, on nine twenty-two, that's virtual. I think it's a good part of the day, but it's virtually.
I've done a virtual one, but.
There's a school in four pounds, I don't know that they're able to.
But actually. What's that?
It's in all of them, they're nice.
Well, some people with, you know, I don't like it, but it's, it's, it's worth it. Even if you, yeah, one or two months because it's just one different area. Okay. Next one, consideration, action items, consideration of David Baker, middle school PE teacher. Any discussion? Do you have anything?
He was offered a position of another district.
All those in favor of that, of the recognition, I, I was opposed. I vote that. Integration, new hire Craig Lake for the middle school.
If I have his packet here. Sure. Well, we're not discussing them individually. I just didn't want it there. And I can get more clarification. So maybe I just go over the highlights and if there's something in particular that you want to know about an individual, then maybe we have a closed session and discuss it there.
That's a good question. Yeah. I just don't want you to hand them out then all of a sudden.
Right. So I have it, I have everything available, so if we need to have further discussion, we can. So Mr. Lake is an experienced PE teacher. We advertised position internally and externally at the same time, just because we needed to get someone hired. We had no internal interest within the school. And he will be starting tomorrow. We've had a long-term sub covering the position up until now, just until he gets his board approval. Everything as far as licensure and transcripts, he qualified. Miss Flair did the interview process and checked on references for him, became well-recommended. And did we have any other applicants for the position? So he was, he was the best one.
Oh.
So I have more of his information, should we want to look at that at the end. So our next person is Shawna Holder and this is for a para educator position. She was already working for us as a substitute para, so we've had her already working in a substitute role tomorrow. She'll start as a contracted role, but since she was already clear to, to be here under the substitute capacity, she has been doing that. There were no other applicants for that position. And I have her interview documents here from Mr. Gross. And if we have any questions about her, we need to wait or are we good? She's technically, she's, no, there were a couple of para positions that were either paras did not return for whatever reason, and we were going to try to do without replacing those positions. But we needed, one had to be replaced. So it's not a new position, it's a, a fill-in for a previous one. But she is considered a new hire because she's being offered a contract and not being on the substitute list. So it's a weird kind of, she worked for us, but she didn't.
And you need one para then? As of right now?
As of right now.
No. But what we'll get, we'll pay. We're probably about three short. And I don't, I want to ask a question, but I don't want to detail this a little bit this far, but we have experience working with her and if she's here, let me see what happens. Yeah.
Yes. No, so anytime you have someone who's already working for you as either a substitute and they want to work full-time, or if you have a para who goes back to school and gets their teaching certificate, it's, it's like they've been doing this long-term on-the-job interview. So these are, these are very positive situations because not only do we know what we're getting in an employee, but this person also knows what they're getting and work for our district. So it, it usually creates a very good relationship.
Are we able to defer table this decision?
We can. That's, that's, that's a board decision, it's a team.
So we're letting that discuss.
If, if that's okay with you, I obviously absolutely don't want to do Shawna. Review the budget.
Technically, she's already been, but we've had her like subbing in the position, so she's been on a substitute.
And she's just replacing a position, not adding.
Right. And there were other positions that, there are other para positions that were vacant that were not being filled.
I agree, there's very likely a need. I just didn't mind for that, obviously, the budget expenditure. But I have only one vote.
So I think it's, um. Do we need votes to consider that after budget later on? We postpone it?
I don't know if we need to vote. I still guess to make the motion.
Do we have any info budget-wise?
We have said part of the informational packet this week or this month is the preliminary line item expenditure budget. But this is the anticipated expenses for the course of the school year.
Well, I think since we have that information and that's information item, I mean, to make the motion, it's like as a mandatory discussion, people can review that if they'd like and then. I'll make the motion to hire Shawna Holder and recognizing that they made the discussion and all that.
And, or is any more discussion? All this in favor? I think they weren't.
The question on, I think the poll's like.
Well, that'll, but that's not going to occur here. That'll occur later on. I think we're still in action. Budget is a.
So the question is, are we approved, are you approving her employment or are we, are you tabling that discussion until after the informational item?
I made a motion to approve, approve for employment.
Okay.
Takes some time for a discussion and review first, which we can't do.
So will it?
Before we put it out to a vote.
So we won my vote up.
Not right at the extent, but we're just going to review the budget.
Look, consider what's going to happen here then, if the session is put to vote.
Well, we won't move on, we'll just review it now.
Okay. So we want to go on to the, the line item, the informational piece now.
Whatever information's from, given to us.
Okay.
Clarify whether or not this is a, being a, or not.
Sure.
Want to give somebody, we'll review those first.
Okay.
And then that would already be projected, like in an admin salary?
I'm sorry.
Where, I guess what line of salaries and aides that would imagine?
So under instruction, salaries and aides, that would be, we've already, this particular position, we left that and they're anticipating that we would fill that vacancy. So this would include the hiring of the person.
And so I know, wasn't there, like, did we move quite a few paras or seven of them? So I mean, or how many others there was?
I don't know exactly how many did not return.
So they're only in that amount, is there only one?
We're only replacing, yes.
Amount in there, there's not like seven paras?
So was that kind of, that's.
Yes. And she's already budgeted for.
We'll, if we need three more, whatever, we don't have a budget for that right now.
I have a rough estimation on the cost per hour, which is hiring somebody versus bringing it up for that one position.
Bubs are paid at a hundred dollars a day. Paras, I mean, depending on the schedule, depend, or on the salary schedule where they're starting, I mean, you're looking at maybe, what is it, thirteen an hour? I think thirteen. For like a base, you know, like, no experience, you're looking at like thirteen to fourteen an hour to start them out. Plus benefits, plus, I mean, there's a lot more that goes into that too, but.
So roughly the same, but.
Well, it'd be like, I worked here, I worked as a sub here last year and the reason that I didn't continue is that you don't have benefits. And so that's the benefit of hiring, you know, finding a good para that, you know, you're offering benefits instead of, here's your hourly wage where you, you have to keep paying one every day too.
Right. So a sub is overall less expensive, but they're also a sub, if they don't want to come to work, they don't have to come to work.
And we have one, paras are, but if, if, if they're still, um, work for us, I appreciate that.
Other than, in turn comes from the budget that, you know, we were approved for, this five million forty-one, and it looks like the difference in the budget amount is two oh nine, so we're coming up short by two hundred and ninety thousand.
We are.
So I guess, do we have, is there grants or other ways to promote that?
We're working on it. So in our e-grants, title-wise, we have about between sixty and sixty-five thousand that's not accounted for. Part of that is, part of our, our title money is already accounted for in this budget and some salary. So that, let's say sixty would bring us down to one forty-nine would be the shortage. That, Cecilia and I are going, we will have to find ways to make up that difference. We have gone through this line by line and eliminated as many expenses as possible. I have been denying purchase orders since school had started because we don't have the money for it. The majority of our budget is in salaries and benefits. And we can't take that for all.
So where can we get this extra, extra from?
That is what we are trying to figure out. Not right now.
You talked a little bit about, I mean, if you have ideas for moving forward on this.
I'm going to look for additional grants. There is, I know there's a special education one that, because it's IDEA, should be federally available, that I want to look into for some of our more impacted students that could free up money to go to other things. I, I don't have a good answer for you. Moving forward into next year, we will do, this year, we will do the application process to be a school-wide Title I school, which will give us more federal money. Also evaluating the, the staff that we do have. I know small class sizes are important. I know having paras is, sometimes having a lot of paras is a luxury. And I will be evaluating those schedules and those needs over the course of the year. And it may be to make things balance for next year that there are positions that just due to attrition, we don't replace. So if a teacher chooses not to return, we may have to make some adjustments to teaching assignments and not replace some teachers who, who don't return. And the same with some paras. It's not ideal and it's not that I don't want to replace those people and it's not that I don't think people deserve their pay, but ultimately, if we don't have the money, we don't have the money. There's also, we have an expense on the books. If you look at, I just wanted to call your attention because mine is next to it as well. So where you see general administrative superintendent, the salaries for administration, it says that amount, that is not me. I do not make that much money. It's at the bottom of the first page, towards the bottom, the last full section. So as part of Mr. Ketchum's resignation package, the board approved paying out his, his contract from July through December. So he is still receiving a salary and benefits from the school district. And that is that additional amount.
Yeah. And that doesn't include the benefits in that, in that section too.
Right.
It's even more than what's listed there.
It probably is. That isn't an expense that we won't have on the budget for next year, but it is there this year.
And then the audits, I mean, they have to be done, what, once a year, every year?
Every year.
And so when that last audit was, didn't it show that there was some in a reserve?
No.
You haven't served that.
So we have the building reserve fund. So the building reserve fund is, can only be used for particular things. So if we were to have a whole furnace go completely out and we had to go spend thirty thousand dollars on a furnace, it would come out of the building reserve fund. We cannot pay salaries or benefits out of that fund. it would come out of the building reserve fund. We cannot pay salaries or benefits out of that fund. We will be dipping into it a little this year to make up some of the differences and other, to help make up some differences. But that fund is also what is used for things like that twenty-five thousand dollars worth of concrete that had to be repoured. The paving or the resurfacing of the parking lot, those types of things come out of the building reserve fund.
So, if you don't allocate funds to the reserve fund, the building reserve fund, which is coming from our?
No, that's from our permissive levy, so that's what goes to the taxpayers.
But you can use that to cover some of the general expenses?
If I had to.
Only maintenance.
Only maintenance type thing, so. Light bulbs. So, some of the things that we have budgeted on the general budget for maintenance, we will use where we can out of the building reserve fund to free it up from the general fund.
But there really is no reason for that to help.
It was overdrawn from the previous business manager due to the COVID, COVID grant. So, when I took over, the auditors were here at that time, and once they fixed that error, it overthrew the general fund from the previous year, which again affected last year. So, no, there's no reserve.
No, in the general.
In the general fund, yeah. The building reserve fund is separate, so that's its own.
So, what, with that fiscal point, point you guys said, so, we have all reserves for this system now?
We don't have any reserves in the general fund, where are you seeing that?
I'm just going off the budget report, twenty twenty-three.
Oh, so that's what we're projecting, that's for coming up, that's where we got our five million dollars. I thought you were wanting to look at the line item budget, which is what we're discussing.
I guess, my challenge is, obviously, you can't, you know, you can't approve a budget.
So, this budget isn't for approval.
Yeah, this is.
This is just informational.
Yeah, or, I know, but it kind of gets back to the prior, the hiring of para. Now, this is kind of the projected situation, that's through the force of the jury, you have the ability to try to get grants and save money where you can, but it changes the decisions that we actually would make in regards to hiring or, you know, necessary expenditures. When, you know, it's a different story if you do have adequate reserves in the general fund.
Well, and the reserves are, it's not what you can spend, though, that's, so that would be probably a Cindy Foley question for her. She would be able to explain the reserves, but it's not just, it's not like a savings account that you can just save, then spend it whenever you want. So, that, I would have to speak to Cindy to get more background on it. But no, there was nothing left.
That's what that's saying, is that it should, should effectively be within kind of balance.
When I, when I closed out.
That much extra to put into your cash.
So, when I closed out June thirtieth and made up for all of the spending from last year, I want to say we had five hundred dollars left in the general fund, if that, maybe a hundred, there was nothing left. And that was from pulling from Esser, which was spent like there was nobody's business last year. Esser's gone, all of our permissive funds, they were drained to clear up for last year, so there's no reserves. There's no reserves.
So, yeah, under the scenario of the budget, budget is going to play out, if we're, we spent two hundred thousand dollars or?
We can't. So, we, between now and then, we have to resolve that, because you cannot overspend your general fund. Right, so that's where we have to, over the next six, eight months.
Contact OPI about how to navigate the next year financial one.
And honestly, going forward, come next spring, we are probably going to have to look at a general fund levy, which we haven't had since oh seven, but with, the salaries aren't going to go down, our budget cannot sustain the projected salaries over the next three to five years. Unless, unless, I mean, our enrollment this year, what was it, seven kids different or twelve kids different, we're not going to get that growth that the state was giving us in the past. Last year, they gave us a hundred thousand dollars, saying you had an increase, so here's a budget, you know, here's some extra to help you out. We probably won't get that this year. We might, but we can't, we can't count on it. So, going forward, in the next three to five years, what are we going to do if we don't, if our numbers are staying, you know?
If they plateaued, yeah.
And they probably will, until the building's done, housing market, we don't know, like, we have no idea what it's going to look like.
So, are there those buildings, or people like that, that may have, will be set up?
I don't know, that's, that's where I will, will be calling and finding out what we need to do and how to revolve them.
Well, probably.
Right.
But I'm just saying, if we don't, if we don't have good records of passing levies.
Correct.
I mean, so, we do not, if, if we go for a levy and it doesn't, then what do we do? I mean, I'm just saying that there's alternatives, but maybe, maybe we need to say anything. I mean, really, I, I.
Well, great challenge, right, because you're going to have to do just, like you said, you have ultimately, you have to just fight that to, to utter backs in order to operate budgets. I mean, that's, I mean, that's how you pitch a general fund, like, basically.
And it's ultimately personnel issue.
It's the board, it, you know, for people who, or some of their kids here want, you know, small class sizes, and, you know, it's the event of that, but.
I share just one item, sure. The AMV that we get from the kids, you get from so many hundred students, and it's different for middle school and elementary, right? And when you're on the underside of that midway, it feels pretty good because you get the bulk up to a certain amount, and after you hit that hundreds mark, whether it's the two fifty or the four hundred for middle school and elementary, then you reduce each AMV after that. So, each child after that is worth left, and it continues. And if we're not a title school, and if we don't pass levies, that this is what a basic education is. So, when I told you that the middle school last year was about eight thousand bucks per kid, which is one of the lowest in the state, that is a basic education. So, unless the voters, if that's what they want, that's what they want, if they pass the levy, then perhaps they want something additional. But we added this whole wing and a kitchen without passing the levy. We have janitors cleaning twice as much, or, you know, we school lock something, a miracle of the community, to add this building with no additional levy fund. But because of the cost of personnel and things, I need to be really creative and try to keep going forward. But it will only continue to get tighter as we grow more students, and we're over that number cap on the AMV.
Can we run a general levy fund, like, this year? Or, like, discover the difference, or?
No, it, it would be in May, when we could run the levy. And then, I guess, then it wouldn't even go in until that fall in the fall, so it'd be for next year, yeah.
So, coming back to a question that was raised, I think, in, in our first meeting together, in looking at the salaries and wanting to offer more competitive, competitive salary. That's still something that I will do the research and, and bring to you later in the year, as far as how pay scales look for different job areas in, in other school districts. And I know the idea of offering raises is, is something that people have advocated for. We're not in a position to do that. And my question is, would be, in the past, how much forecasting has been done in looking at how are, how were the raises that were given in the past compared to revenues? Was there any consideration in looking at, are the raises that are being offered going to be sustainable with the, the revenues that are coming in? But that, that isn't before we offer raises to any group of people in the building, since that is our largest expense. We really have to evaluate, can we afford the raises? And so, that would be my question, is has that process occurred, is, are the raises being evaluated in relationship to the revenue? I don't know, but I know moving forward, that is something that we will definitely want to take into consideration. I also think another thing that has impacted, not significantly, but is an impact, is that there are, we're, we're including some retirees as an expense, and that there were incentives offered. The anticipation is, if you have someone who has twenty-five years, they retire, you hire in somebody who has two years. And that incentive, it becomes more cost-effective. What has happened with some of the hires is, they don't have two years, they've got ten. So, the difference in the, what they're being paid is not significant enough to offset the expense of the incentive. So, that.
People being on the board, it depends on some of the, some of the things that are entirely about, moving on it, it's like, so. We were presented that information, and we were very feeling like, like, saying, they were, they're all the same, it's a quality. The information we have now, it's hard to perfect that, but you're pretty blind, blind to it at that moment.
We weren't, I think, part of these, more than blinded by Esther money. I think every time we, yeah, I know myself, when I look at this, I sort of work that, where's that outlook continuously, like, where's that money coming from? All of that money is, and so, I think that that whole mindset just kind of expanded into everything else, and, you know.
Well, and we were even projected dollars that went there.
Well, and, and to tie back to one of the things that we discussed earlier, with the, the research by people like John Hattie, one-to-one, isn't that impactful? Technology companies have made a lot of money on the back of one-to-one technology is, is useful and helpful. It's actually not that significantly impactful. So, that's where, when we're looking and we're talking about making decisions based on instructional research, if you look at, you, you take time to look at how you're spending your money and how that is tied to the research that has been done, then maybe we don't spend as much money on technology, and then we have that money available. What does impact student achievement, and this is consistent time and time again, is students' access to high-quality in-person instruction. So, an investment in salaries is a fantastic investment, that is the best place to put our money. But that means that maybe we have five Chromebooks in a classroom and not thirty. And maybe we have one online program instead of ten. So, it's, it's really looking at what is going to have the most impact from a research standpoint, from people who know things far better than I do. And that's where we put our money. So, the one-to-one initiatives existed long before COVID, and, which provides a, a body of research to be able to justify whether that's impactful or not, and a lot of research says that it's not.
Instead of them just sitting around not being used. I think that's a really good point, like, so, I mean, kind of circle back to what you talked about earlier, as we kind of make decisions through this, you know, kind of height here, we should recognize that, I don't think the places to try to trim and cut are on staff salaries and that instruction. One thing to, to try to be thoughtful about it, because I think everybody agrees with teachers are definitely not overpaid. And they do, you know, trick greatly the, the education of students.
I think we have to look at some of these programs that we're buying on, I, I don't know, the one that first came in the last year, when we go twenty-three thousand, doing math program. And then, Tommy came and said, my gosh, we're doing really good math, and I thought, oh, my God, we just paid twenty-three thousand for a math program, and we were doing really good math anyway, you know, so I'm thinking maybe we need to avoid judgment on some of these extensive stat like this that we all.
And we consolidated it, we replaced it.
It's the same, it's the same company that's moved forward, they're not making the old math program in there. Just letting you know, there's a reason we had to jump that, that transcription was up.
And I, you know, I did, so, yes, it just occurs to me that, you know, that was the twenty-three thousand.
Two hundred.
Do you have some amazing teachers who want to write their own program, and we can sell them to other people?
There are districts that do that.
Yeah.
All the time we have, we have that.
Yeah, I mean, I have like those one hours at night that you are bored, or.
I have the same philosophy when it comes to teachers, it's, it does, as I do with homework, they work for seven hours. You know, it's one thing to go home and spend an hour or two checking your email and just kind of wrapping up the day. So, just, just to throw that out there. And, but we haven't made it to it yet, but there is a purchase order for a piece of technology on the agenda. So, since we're kind of in that neighborhood, this is our benchmark assessment, which we are required to have, which is why it's on your agenda. It's in excess of ten thousand dollars, which requires board approval.
That's the Renaissance?
That's the Renaissance. It, it is not a want, it is a need, we, we do have to have that. It doesn't have to be, I want to evaluate the benchmark assessments that we're using, but this is the one that has been used, and it will be the one that we would need to use this year. But the state does require that we do benchmark assessments.
This is what you're talking about.
Right, the window is open, so students will start testing, we're required to do that as part of child finding and other laws. You have to be, a monitoring on a, on a norm test, you can't make that first up, that has to be.
Right.
A norm test, and then you have to show.
So, this twelve thousand dollars is, I mean, is, yeah, this area.
It's for, it's for that, and it's for placement and for student growth and helping teachers in their own areas, but, yeah, it does many different things, but that's what, but the state requires that we.
We have some type of, like she's saying, norm assessment, it can't be something that we've generated ourselves, because we can make a really fantastic test, and everybody does really wonderful one.
This is mandated, right, personally, I mean, some of it, maybe perhaps not all of it, but.
The assessment itself, the Renaissance isn't what's mandated, but having an assessment and Renaissance is what it'll send me.
If we don't come up with this twelve thousand, the Renaissance, like.
Which this is in the budget, so that.
It's budgeted for.
We have budgeted for it.
You guys shop all for the, the, the reserves or?
We will this year. There, I, I would like to see us consolidate all of our assessment and intervention programs into one program and eliminate having multiple types of assessments and multiple intervention programs. I'd rather it all be under one umbrella, and I'm not sure what the cost comparison is yet, because I just, I haven't done it. But I feel like instructionally, that is a better system. But right now, just because of the timing, we, it's not, we don't have the time to research and do cost comparisons on another benchmarking company. It's something we've got to get done.
I think that would have been really nice to know about right before the last run for levies.
And we didn't have it then.
I feel like our people were always supporting salaries and all that.
That's good, you'd like to think so.
Yeah, but we just want this building.
Exactly, I don't know if I ran too lucky at the same time, all right?
I mean, probably last book.
So, say if you have to pull some from, from the building reserve fund, you try to run the levy, you do get a pass. I mean, then can they go back to replace the, no?
Well, the building reserve fund is, is, that one.
Well, the building reserve fund is, is, that one's a permissive levy. So that one's there every year. It's just, it is what it is. So you don't have to pay it back. No, because then next year, whatever the mills go out as, depending on, you know, where we end up, it would then just, it's just like a pot that'll keep slowly refilling.
It gets replenished.
Yeah. So whatever we take out from the general fund, we don't have to repay it from next year's general fund or anything like that. Yeah, it would have to be things that fall under that. I mean, like I said, like the light situation, if we would get our audit done and, you know, if they cost us.
We're only going to spend money on things that we can spend money on out of funds that we can spend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a general question on just expenditures. And I know you guys said that not the best for approval, if at some point are we going to approve the expenditure? I don't understand how we don't approve expenditures if you guys, from a budget standpoint.
So each month you approve the bills.
Or ask us to approve expenses at the, the, you know, you go and say like we approved the expenses. But if we don't approve a budget and a budget of expenditures, then what is the point of the expenses?
So the list of bills that I give you, is that what you're referring to? Right. So you guys go through and approve them. Okay, those are already coded, sitting in my system right now, waiting for me to go in tomorrow and print them. So if you say, no, we don't want to pay these, so we don't pay them. Then what?
I know, but that's what I'm saying. We have to have some sort of, we have to have some sort of baseline or cap. So that way we'll see those expenses.
Right. And going, and once we get this- Well, that doesn't matter though, but that's. So finance is different than school finance. Yeah. So we can't go over that five million dollars. That's my job, is to stay below that five million dollars. That's what I was hired for last year. Okay, that's, that's what we're going to do together. I don't know how it was done in the past. I don't know. I am assuming that Cindy was so dialed in that her and Cal maybe never met and went over it. I don't know. I'm new, Cindy's new, so we're working on it together. So. Well, that's fine. I've worked in finance too. I've worked at a finance company. I've worked at banks. I did the investments for the county. I understand your background. It's very different on this side. So if you're a line item, let's say I put a thousand dollars in on supplies, but instead I spend twelve hundred. That doesn't matter. The bottom line is what matters. That five million dollars.
I think the bottom line is the concern. So when you're asking about why the, the approval and why you don't approve the, the line item expenditures. So you are approving, and this is me just trying to put two things together. You're approving the revenues because that's what goes out and puts a tax burden on the taxpayers. Board policy, seventy-three twenty, which is financial management. The authorization and control. The superintendent is authorized to direct expenditures and purchases within the limits of the detailed annual budget for the school year. The board must approve purchases of capital outlay items. When the aggregate total of requisition exceeds ten thousand dollars, except the superintendent shall have the authority to make capital outlay purchases. Without advanced approval when necessary to protect the interests of the district or the health or safety of staff and students, the superintendent will establish requisition and purchase order procedures to control and maintain proper accounting of expenditure of funds. Staff who obligate the district without proper authorization may be held personally responsible for payment of such obligations. So what board policy does is authorizes the superintendent to set expenditures. And you've, you've approved the revenues, you've approved the tax burden, and you're trusting that me or someone like me is making the right choices in how the money gets spent up to a certain point. What has not happened over about at least the last two years is there has not been a process for requisitions and making purchases, which means things have not been tracked and recorded accurately. When we, we have looked at what was budgeted last year, what the recommended amount was. We've pulled almost every single item to see what the actual cost was. In many instances, the actual cost exceeded what was budgeted. The ease, the one I remember the best is the light bill. The budgeted amount for last year was forty-five thousand dollars. The actual extent was over fifty thousand. So we've budgeted fifty-four because we anticipate that that expenditure is going to increase. Looking back over the last several years, that, that expenditure budget for the electricity has been forty-five thousand dollars for the last three years. Despite going up. So if anything, we have estimated high because I would rather estimate high and come in under than estimate low and have pretty numbers on a piece of paper. I still think we're over. It will be a challenge and it is something that Cecilia and I will have to navigate. It's not something for the board to navigate. Because policy seventy-three twenty says, I have to figure it out.
Well, I have a question to say. No, as you said, as I hear that, the first line, you are authorized to create expenditures within the budget of expenditures.
Right.
So the budgeted expenditure?
It says within the limits of the detailed annual budget for the school year. So that budget is the, the revenue budget, the one that gets reported to the state.
I personally think, I guess, again, it's a different world. I understand that. I have experience in, you know, saying no to government demand. But, you know, I think it's important from our position of oversight. You have input into how you have expenditures in it, especially if we're being asked to approve. Guys are asking us to approve these bills. I understand they're already incurred. So it's not like we really have a lot to say no to. Nonetheless, we're being asked to approve it. Similarly, we're being asked to approve bills over ten thousand dollars. Again, it's kind of, it all leads up in the fact that as a board, we should have oversight and be approving the budget of expenditures.
I think this was the situation we're obviously in this year. It, it would be kind of nice just to know, like, on the line items, like whenever we are approving the bills, like, hey, this is the budgeted amount, but this is, we're at this amount.
Yes, and going forward, once we get this dialed in, I can input that into the system and print you that report.
So we're not going to get to the end of the year and we're now over by four hundred thousand.
Right.
You know, I mean, I know you guys-
Right.
You know, I guess why I kind of wanted to say two thousand dollars for that, for the, for the expenses for science in the middle school. I mean, I need this comment at the end of the meeting. I thought, I thought to myself, you know, not working. How much, what percentage of that is the total supply budget? And that's what you're saying for generating, you know, how much now does that take out? How much is left? We don't have any idea how much is left. So if we get another two thousand dollars expenditure for-
There won't be.
Is there sixteen thousand? It's, but, you know, how many do we have? How much money left left? You know, we just never know how much is left because we didn't spend in.
Well, this is great because I feel like I've never seen, you know, we haven't seen anything like this.
Well, and to be fair, Cindy Foley recommended me not share this with you guys because this is my working copy. This is me taking notes and putting in my numbers until I can put it into Black Mountain. That's what you guys should see. So.
And this has nothing, like my comments have nothing to do with, like, you guys are, are trusting you. I'm just, I'm just trying to do my job.
And that's what we're trying to do as well.
And I, and I agree. And I think just, again, so you, you bring in the expenditures and it's, it's just seems appropriate that we could have the ability to kind of, again, prepare them and feed into the budget. Because ultimately, you know, if, again, as we said, right now, we have no reserves.
Right.
Right. So there has to be some sort, if, if we get to the end of the year and you give the last, you know, the last month's paychecks and we don't have any money, it's, it's going to fall back on us too, right? So there has to be some monitoring and control through, through out the year to ensure that we're not in that position. It's not only your responsibility, it's also our responsibility.
Right. And that's what, like I said, that's what we're working to do, to find that extra. But, I mean, that five million dollars is the baseline. There is not a penny over that. And that's what we-
We have to, we have to operate within that.
Well, and that's all we could approve.
That's all you could ever approve anyways. Yeah.
Unfortunately entrusting you guys to call within that. I think what would be helpful though is just moving forward. I know you're still working on that for yourself. Everybody's like moving forward, having like line items and that we're approving these bills and this is a percent of that line item.
Yes. And once we get this-
Like, okay, we're on track for, for that line item. We can move on. And then we might be over and we could print books.
And then you can explain why, hey, we're over here, but it looks like we're tracking under over there.
Right.
And you guys could have a discussion.
Right. And as long as you look at the bottom line, where we're at a fat percentage wise, that's what matters in the end.
And I get that, and right now it's bottom line.
Exactly. Right. So that's why I can't put it into the software system until we figure out where we can get our cut, where we can get some extra, what we can do to put that. Because I can't even, I mean, we can't put an over budget in the system. It's defeat the purpose. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I do know the cost of a lot of these expenses going through prior, or we realize what kind of situation we really were in. So I think, I think that I expect maybe, I mean, I'm, I'm doing this, but I, I assume that in months I won't get a boost of student, more of a stream one.
That's, that's the goal. But we are, part of what you saw tonight for bills are things that were already approved and set into action last school year. And you, what you don't see on there are the notes to purchase orders that teachers have submitted and have been denied.
And, and you mentioned, I think in your Friday comments, that you are a competition with the teachers. The requisition order, maybe they're not going to blow a stream if they have nothing else. And, and the same information, and everybody loves to give a pair of small ones up when it isn't. It isn't in the card, so that makes, that makes some of those decisions on your part. And when people request that, it makes it easier for you.
Well, and I, I am happy to discuss this with any of the staff. A group of teachers came and met with me last week and asked, you know, why their purchase order had not been approved. And I had a draft of this and we had a very honest conversation about it and they were able to understand why their, their purchase order wasn't approved. And I'm willing to have that conversation with, with anyone who comes in. I'm not going to send it out in an email. But- Right. And it's, this is not a problem that was created last month.
No, no.
And, and being on the board last year, we had none of this information. Moving throughout the year too, we were giving our bills and approving them and moving on. It was always that, you know, obviously we were approving the budget for the year. Pretty much is what it is, right? And we were entrusting that those that had that power would enough stay within that. We, we weren't staying within that and we were justifying it because we were being pulled out of that excess extra money. But we overspent the extra money. And nobody was really keeping track of the fact that we're really overspending our budget at the same time. And like, looking back at it, I would, we would have probably made a lot different decisions back then. But now, but I, I do appreciate that instead of going ahead and move forward. And I think, yeah, that percentage of budget we're reporting will be super helpful. But then if we're like, you know, we've spent like sixty percent of budget for only halfway through the school year, then we need to figure something out in that realm versus like, geez, we're right on track and we're moving towards, you know, ninety percent of the school year is over and we're running eighty-nine percent, then we can be super happy.
And really, the whole thing is still entrusted in that.
And we're, that's- We've, we've reduced supply budgets, we've reduced supplemental curriculum budgets. Part of having the energy audit, I mean, if we can reduce our light bill even a little bit. I wish I could figure out a way to secure the dumpster because I've been told that people in the community will come and put their trash in our dumpster and I think we pay by volume. So when people are putting their household trash in our dumpster rather than just driving it up the road to the landfill themselves, that is, it's a separate services. It's, that's an expense on the district.
It only opens at the end of the day.
Possibly. And that's why if you've ever noticed around businesses that their dumpsters are locked up because-
I mean, the county doesn't have a county dump. You should have a packet and pack it out.
So, I mean, we're, we're looking at everything right down to the amount of garbage.
Has there been any, anyone who started, like, council has the council education fund where they raise money that, you know, goes to pay for these extra classes for teachers. We will give out free. You know, something like the PPO could, you know, think about it. I don't know anything about it, but I could find out.
It's, it's possible and that might would help supplement some of the things that we're not, some of the extra things that we're not able to get the teachers. We're, we're not going to be able to sell enough candy bars to make up a two hundred thousand dollar.
Hopefully the teachers are going up to the parents' level of what they need to.
Right. And, and some teachers are and they're putting out wish lists and things like that.
And sometimes I think that maybe we could have to be a little creative and, and not need so much. You know, I think sometimes the way that stuff is, I mean, I, I, I just, I just, you know, I just, I just, I hate to see it for the parents too much.
I think the wish lists are nice though.
I like those. Yeah, because you guys have money to pay. What worries me is you send a kid home that his parents don't have the money and he's got five other kids. And there, there were just terrible, that wish list is a, a, a battery.
It's not really sent home though. It's more just like you can put on it on a lot of these old kind of things. So it's not like it's mandatory.
The kids don't even know about it.
They don't know.
Yeah. The kids don't know about it.
And a lot of parents really, you know, like, yeah. Well, it's kind of a way of philanthropy though.
You have no idea what you get as a parent.
Get that way.
Well, and that, in my experience, I've run into that a lot where parents, they, they want-
You want to get something they have no idea.
Right. And you, if you're, if you're going to spend the money on something, you want to make sure you're spending your own money on something that's going to be beneficial. Because even as a teacher, I would get things and it's like, oh, this is nice. And then you send it over here and then you feel bad that someone has spent their time and money and energy on it, but it's not useful. So the, the wishlist, it's, it's, it's helpful on both ends.
We had somebody today to drop off probably twenty tissue boxes, sanitizer and carrot wipes. They just donated it and it was sitting there in the office of class needed it. So, I mean, it is out there. And it doesn't have to be a lot. I mean, a box of tissues goes a long ways for the class I need. Can we get, can we get a box of tissue and a five dollar bill, please?
So all of that to come back around to- So all of that to come back around to. So we have our, our para educator who is on the agenda for approval. And that is, that is your decision to, to approve or not approve her full-time employment.
So in light of the budget, which I understand is that you feel like that's hiring her full time is inappropriate.
I can't answer that question right now because I don't have all of the para schedules. I've emailed out an itemized form for the principals to fill out. So that I will be working on evaluating how paras are being utilized and what their minutes are. After I have that information, I could probably make a stronger recommendation one way or the other, whether this para is actually needed. Right now, my recommendation for even posting the position was feedback from the principals that they needed the additional supervision.
If we don't hire her, is she going to stay on her stuff?
That I don't know. Without asking her.
Well, I mean, we, we offer her that position at the show. So if we don't, if we don't hire her, she's a, she's history. She won't, she won't be.
Well, and we can ask the principal, where are we operating with paras right now? Are we understaffed or are we stretching?
We are. With our staffing issues, we're pretty so hard. It sucks. We're going to have to pull them places anyway. Right now, we're at bare, bare minimum for even supervising kids in the same way. Tanya can speak to it too, but you know, we have these intervention groups that we speak about and, you know, use the Renaissance to help us build those. And right now we're just eliminating them. You can't even do what we need to do for the parents that we have. So, yeah, I can analyze it for you right now and tell you they are very, very welcome.
Yeah, just wanted to get in line of supervision recess duties, lunch duties, which teachers come to actually have a forty-five minute lunch. Right now we only have two paras in the lunchroom and two paras outside on several lunches. So we remove Shauna, we won't have two.
So we would have to, I mean, pull other people from other places to see if they can do the regular work day, which would be called, you know, coaching people. Now you just, basically it's like a laundry bin, you know, just keep eyeing like, oh, it's all, all.
Certainly we did a deficit because today we take several people out with no coverage plus, so we just all keep sliding. And so that means I have children with me, you know, coaches have children with them during the day because we don't have enough pairs to even slide around the covers. You take off maybe covers in a most safe classroom because they're assisting in the classroom. They get pulled next to a direct assignment where a child has to either for a course, right? And then you just fly along and you have these very limited covers and there aren't even subs. Cover rest when we are gone. If you have a building, you can figure with maybe some people in the building that mean any given day.
But also with the, the shortages of subs where now you're having an experience, just high school graduates subbing in classrooms where you maybe have students who need interventions or just for a safety issue, supervision.
And I know they're high school students today, right? So I took them with me at that time. I was a member of someone else's staff.
Right. That's why it's so important for us to apply for the Title I as well. I mean, we're operating at that without funding.
Isn't we, isn't that a minimum?
So to qualify for school-wide Title I, I think the threshold is 40% free and reduced enrollment. There is a way to apply for it without meeting that threshold.
And.
We didn't meet it before.
No. Haven't met that. So right now we're considered a targeted Title I school, which technically means any person, any Title I money has to be spent on a student who is identified as a Title I student. So a para working with, who's being paid with Title I money can only work with students who are identified as Title I, which would mean high poverty students.
Yeah, but there's a.
But if we, if we worked, when we apply for and hopefully become approved for school-wide, then every child in the building is considered a Title I student. And anyone can work with anyone. We can buy, so like supplies, school supplies. Right now as a targeted school, we could only buy school supplies for students who are identified as Title I. As a school-wide school, we can buy all of the pencils for all of the kids.
How about lunches too?
Lunches, I'm not sure about. Because that would, that, they still are going to qualify under child nutrition. But it's, you have to be very careful as a targeted school because what you don't want to do is go into a classroom and say, you get the free stuff and you have to pay. But under a school-wide plan is, okay, here's the cost of crayons.
And you, you think that we maybe ought to do that?
I, in, in the conversation with the state federal programs director, that the training that Cecilia and I went to, he and I spoke and he said that there's a lot more paperwork that goes into it. But it's just paperwork. And it will take the year to get the paperwork together. But he will help us through that process so that we will qualify for next year.
But for this year?
This year we don't have it.
All right. Back to Shauna. But we have a motion, one second, to, to hire her. All right. Is there any more to say? Only in favor of hiring Shauna. I, I oppose. All right. And now.
Yep. So the assistant football coach, there was one who did not return, which created an opening. And we advertised it on the website and on the Facebook page. We received two applicants. Terry and Tina and I think Coach Keller interviewed both applicants and made the recommendation based on who was, was qualified. And that's who I have here. He has been operating as a volunteer just because season is what the season is. And they needed that person supporting the kids. But it was advertised, interviewed for and recommended.
Under the new.
Under the procedures. That were outlined.
So what you have is in your hand is the.
So it was made available to anyone interested in being, I think, an offensive coordinator.
That's not the same.
Too. Both applicants had the same opportunity. Yes.
And is it a paid position or is it sponsored?
It is. I think it's a $500 stipend that's paid out of the athletic fund.
I'll make a motion for the entire, for all.
For the season.
Um, and I understand you've been volunteering. It seemed to outsiders anyway, it's first time that folks like people that. Started already there, working, coaching, and then this was posted and it seemed like more of a kind of a cover up.
So here's.
I'm glad that you.
Right.
That he was volunteering at that. Honestly, I couldn't find a better person for that role. I think he's an amazing, so he's an amazing person. So.
So some clarification on that.
Yeah.
And Coach Keller, because he's not in the building, was not aware that we had updated our hiring procedures. And he did notify parents that this individual was going to be the new coach. Terry and I sat down with him and discussed the procedures for hiring and advertising. And that was communicated back to this person and the, the Google document where his name had been listed, it was changed to, to be determined.
Yes.
Uh, so it's just, it was some growing pain with the, the coach not being in the building full-time and not knowing that there was a new procedure. So he followed what historically had been done, but we've made that correction.
I appreciate that because that was exactly what somebody's motion looked like. Google Doc, that was changed, that was gone, now it's posted and.
Yes.
It tightly ended up in the same place, but.
So Terry is.
Concerns about that from other people and I just wanted to make sure that.
Right. As soon as Terry was aware, we started having those conversations to, to make corrections.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah, I'll second that.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor?
I, I oppose.
Um, next consideration, a better purchase order, which should have led into other things that are necessary.
I'll make a motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Right. Consideration of change of the football.
So Laura wrote up a statement on this. It should be in your packet, I hope.
So ultimately what it is, we have a bus stop outside of a, a development where the bus is picking up approximately 35 foot long at one stop. It's obstructing traffic and it's also creating a safety issue just because of the volume of students there. There had previously been construction in the, the neighborhood, which made it difficult for the bus to get through. That construction is pretty much complete. So now the bus can pull into the neighborhood and load those children at a couple of different stops. It's about a half mile difference. Treasure State has agreed not to modify our contract with them because it is in the best interest of the student's safety and the bus driver's safety that this route be modified to get that bus off the main road for loading purposes. But that's what the, the modification is.
That's metal that's we're going to turn in at Mount Vista.
Yeah.
And then there's one stop there and then one California.
Yeah. So I've come across the bus stop, the park market there, the stop, park market. Trade because they weren't pulling into the neighborhoods. If you want to say agreed not to, to redo the contract, then it's not changing that cost.
Right. And it's not. And it, it really isn't in the best interest of, of them and us and definitely our kids.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All right. Okay. Information items. August cash, first of the year, we do our office fund, one fifteen for June, July activities. They didn't use up their entry.
Well, this was a, this was a.
No. So the small one is, okay, so I talked to Cindy Foley today. We're going to change these forms for next month because there's an easier report to look at. So the 182 fund is our interlocal agreement fund that we have between Marion, Smith Valley, Kyla. So it's just a pool of money and that just shows mostly its interest each month, but Kyla did make a deposit in July. So that's just kind of accounting for that one. The Fund 15, that's our miscellaneous fund. And since that one's not a budgeted fund, it just has the breakdown of each of those, like internal codes there. And so as a whole, that's just what Fund 15 looks like. But like I said, next month, I'm hoping it'll be a little easier. Hopefully. Well, yes. So if you don't, yes. So it's, you have to have your request in by the 25th of the month. So if I put it in June 30th, we still haven't gotten it yet because it takes them that long to approve it. Plus there's no payments in July and October. So that's why. But yeah, so most of that's the curriculum, like the lodging that you had asked about. So that's the payments that we're still waiting to come in from us or. That would be nice. Um, I think there's a few thousand here and there, but not a ton. Maybe, maybe a, maybe 10 total guessing, but it won't be a lot.
Any just information?
Nope. It's just informational. So some of them are grants. Some of them, there are a few that teachers wrote, they're individual grants. And so we just keep track of them in there. I think there's a couple up towards the top. There's the PE uniform one because it's not a budgeted fund. So, you know, that's, that one is, is the grants towards the bottom. There's like the Medicaid. So it's just kind of a breakdown of everything that's inside that 115 fund.
I appreciate all the work you guys are doing and I completely understand in here, especially the board members and the concern about budgeting. You were operating a little bit blind in the last couple of years and being told that we were, we're doing great. We're way under and everything's wonderful. And then come to find out that was not true. But I appreciate all the effort moving forward.
I thought they thought everything was like.
Yeah, we told everything was, oh, we're way under.
Well, I think.
We'll get back there.
We, we bought all those digital computers and all that money, you know, we had to do it and thought, oh, we'll get, we'll get the computers. At that point, we didn't know whether our kids were going to be home.
Yeah. Probably we were told that.
And the majority of the. I mean, we had all kinds of reasons to do that. Even though I understand now that that one-on-one is a good kind of vacation. But at that point, we weren't sure that that's not all we were having. That's why I didn't understand that part. Now do we need a picture?